And we're live.
All right, we will have a countdown so for editing purposes, Tiana, can you give us countdown, please?
Yep, five, four, three, two, one.
We welcome the public and our council members to the budget workshops of the common council. And for those of you who are watching by Facebook, we have gone through the hearings, the public hearings. We've gone through the hearings with the department heads. And what will happen today, possibly tomorrow, if we have callbacks, is we begin to meet with, again, with department heads, unions have been invited to discuss in a little deeper dive for some, the numbers that are before us in the budget. And so the public, if we were back in city hall physically, would be able to attend those workshops. But the workshops are designed so that the council and its staff are able to dive in a little deeper into the numbers that are presented to us as a common council. And so there is no roll call for this type of meeting. This is really just a meeting to learn more information as requested by council members. And so for each department, the, our chief of staff will let us know who the next department is, because this is somewhat fluid, because we try to get our first responders in first. And when they are available, so we'll begin our workshops, chief of staff, who do we have?
We have Buffalo Police Department, which is online now and will be fired, followed by fire.
All right, thank you. And I'm just moving the screen around a little here to see the, but I see them right there. And so I know that you all have already given your presentation in the budget hearings. Is there anything else that you want to add or any questions that were asked of you that you want to answer before we go to the council members?
Oh, no.
All right, chief of staff, was, were there any questions from council members that were listed out from the hearings?
Yes, sir, council member Wyatt asked if we could get a breakdown of overtime numbers.
All right, I'm sorry, I've got to, did we get that available, is that available now?
Yes.
All right, whoever wants to respond to that, was that already sent out to the council members?
We, we did not mail it out yet. The question that we have is what specific breakout is he looking for? Overtime encompasses a number of things within the department. Everything from manpower shortage to grant reimbursable to enforcement, festivals, different grants. So the question is, what exactly are, are you looking for? How would you like that broken down? We, we have it with us. And if you're just looking for a five hundred foot level overview, we can provide that. Otherwise, we can tell or something specific to what you're looking for.
All those categories are fine. Yeah, all those categories are fine. You can just submit it to me with those categories on it.
Okay.
All right, if you could submit it either through chief of staff to be distributed, if you like, to all members, so I'll share that data. Council, go ahead, councilman Wyatt.
Thank you, council president. Are you on, are you on pace to be under over overtime? Or are you looking at being over for overtime this year?
We're going to be right about that, maybe a little over, but that won't be on their salaries. We, we will, we're on pace right now to be slightly over on overtime, but we're on pace to also be under on salaries. So it should balance itself out by the end of this fiscal year.
So you said salaries are under and overtime is under?
Overtime may be a little over, but it'll balance.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, any, from any other council member?
Yes.
On the police budget, council member Rivera.
Thank you very much, Command Staff Commissioner. I'm looking at the page 172 with regards to work program statistics. And I was looking at the statistics for the various crimes, a search warrants executed. You had 240, 204, 247 search warrants executed. You're projecting 300 search warrants for the 2020, 2021. Now, I know in the past, there were a lot more search warrants. Is there a reason why we're executing less search warrants?
Yeah, we've are looking at some of the changes of our narcotics and, and gearing towards a more safe approach on these. We've been retooling and going over threat matrix and, and different aspects to go into, getting a search warrant and getting more bang for our buck out of the search warrant. So we're getting more training for narcotics detectives. We're looking at purchasing safer equipment for them and the execution of these search warrants as well. And then body cameras as well has been getting them trained on body cameras for the execution of search warrants.
So when you're saying you want a greater bang for your buck, then the execution of search warrants are not turning up too much? Is that what you're saying?
You get both, I mean, there's a lot of 311 complaints and our narcotics detectives are responding to these 311 complaints. And they're getting buys and hitting these doors. It's, you know, you don't know what you're going to get once you, once you hit them based off the 311 buy. So we're looking at building up some more long-term investigations to get larger, you know, larger seizures and take out more networks.
Yeah, as a council member, one of the, two of the major complaints I, I received in my office is quality of life currently, drug activity, and many times I just forwarded to Chief Dennis Richards, Chief of Detectives, to see if they can set up something and hopeful, hopefully execute search warrants and find drugs, money, and get these people out of the neighborhoods. So I mean, that is a concern to mine as well. I look very closely at the execution of search warrants. The other complaint that I receive in my office is prostitution and Johns. And I noticed that under prostitute, you project actual arrest 20 for 2020. I see 20 prostitutes on a street on a given day sometimes, and I'm just concerned about that. I, you know, certainly I'd like to see the Johns arrested as well, but that's such a low number. Is there a reason why it's so low in terms of projections?
I'll go back to the 311 complaints. I mean, one of the big issues is, you know, we share your concern about wanting to get people out of, get drug dealers out of those houses and out of those neighborhoods. The issue that we're confined with is the bail reform laws. And our narcotics guys will go in, our officers are hitting these 311s hard. They get arrested and they're automatically released right back out again. And what we also see is we might get them out of that house and they could move into a house a block over. So we want to be much more strategic about getting more quality arrests and having our patrol force pay constant attention to these 311s and address those problems that way. Then have narcotics come in and do a quick hit and then have those guys get released right back out again because of the bail reform laws. They cannot be held on the drug charges. There was a minor modification to the, the drug charges that can be held, but it's still at the very high level. So they're getting right back out again. And then we get into housing court to try and get an order to vacate. But we don't just want to simply move the problem down the road. We want to get higher levels and try to dry up that drug market. The prostitution, you know, same thing, you know, we'll get our detectives out and look to make some of those prostitution arrests. We have to satisfy certain conditions, as you know, to, for our patrol force to get a John or to do a reverse sting on prostitution. But the same thing, they're, they're right back out on the street, no matter how many warrants they may have. We tend to see our prostitutes have a high volume of warrants. They would see a judge and are absolutely have to be released or it's a mandatory release upon arraignment. So, you know, we're, we're seeing them constantly back out on there. So we're, we're trying to get ahead of that problem and, and work within the laws that exist. But they're right back on the street the moment they're arraigned.
I'm still looking at the numbers and even if you arrest, I mean, you made 19 arrests for 2019, 2020. That number, even if they're, the courts dispose of the cases and they're sent back out, that number is so low. I'm just wondering, I mean, what's the alternative? Do you just, I mean, in terms of enforcement, what do you do? I, I understand the problem you're having with bail reform, but at the same time, how do you mitigate the concerns of the residents? And I see the numbers and they're very low for vice. So that is a concern of mine, because that has been one of my pet peeves on Grand Street and other places has been the number of prostitutes that we see every single day, walking up and down the street. And, and there's so many of them, the business community are complaining saying, hey, they're driving away businesses on this street, you know, we're, we're spending all this money. And at the same time, that's what you have to walk by, the Johns and the prostitutes. So that number is pretty low. How the courts dispose, I have no control of it. The enforcement is our responsibility, how courts dispose of the cases, whether they're bail reform or whatever. But if we don't lock them up, they don't get before the judge to make some kind of determination. So I'm, I'm looking at the very low numbers in terms of, of vice arrest. And so that's one, and I hope that there's an answer to this problem or else. I mean, just because, you know, we have bail reform, doesn't mean we stop enforcing the laws that are on the books. We have to do something, get them in front of the judge, let the judge make, judges make that determination. At some point, it'll reach its conclusion in the courts, but it's up to them at that point. But I'll continue to forward the narcotics reports, narcotics complaints to the district chiefs, to the vice unit, to Chief of Detectives Dennis Richards, and I hope we can mitigate this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes, thank you, council president. Captain Ronaldo, just to follow up on your response to council member Wyatt about salaries being down and overtime up. What, what are some of the factors that contribute to salaries being down? Like why, why are our salaries under what we budgeted for? Does that contribute to overtime costs? Just trying to understand that a little better.
Sure, so the salaries being down is a couple of different factors. So number one, vacancies that we get to be able to fill. Obviously, we had over 20 positions that we were slated to hire for on the civilian side of the fence. Then unfortunately, this time period put an end to it. So we've yet to be able to hire and train a number of staff in our cell block as well as report technicians. So it does generate minimum manpower overtime when there's a shortage. So salary down, overtime is risen.
Thank you.
The council members?
Council President.
Uh, President Proto?
Yeah, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I just had a question on page 179 of the budget when it comes to the vehicle fleet. Obviously, we've had this conversation several times about the number of vehicles that are available to the officers throughout the city of Buffalo. And in your statistics, it mentions that there's 230 vehicles for the 2018, 2019 budget year. Then this current year, you were projected to have 229, so roughly the exact same number. And then a drop moving forward of around 10 cars for this upcoming year despite the leasing of those vehicles. Is this a timing issue with those vehicles coming in? Or is it some other factor that you could let us know about?
Sure, so in terms of the number of vehicles, what we have currently are anticipating, and again, not to blame COVID, but to blame COVID. The Ford factories have been shut down. So it's delayed the processing of the vehicle orders as well as obviously the estimated time for delivery. But based on our 2019 budget, so the budget we're currently living under, we will regain and bring into our fleet 66 new vehicles. For next year, for the 2020 budget, we are adding an additional 30 vehicles into the fleet. So within less than a year, that'll be a total of 96 new vehicles that we add into the fleet. Some of the money is being from the capital budget, some is from a bond sale. So the money will hit at different times, but in total, again, in the course of a year, we anticipate 96 brand new vehicles being available for the fleet.
That's in addition to the estimated 220 for this year coming up?
No, part of the estimated.
Oh, part of the 220, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Protemp, any other council member? All right, seeing no one else. I just, council member Wyatt? Council member Wyatt?
Okay.
Um.
Think you're having problems with your connection?
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
You're good.
Okay, um, okay. The, yeah, can you give us the specifics on the, because I'm looking at some of the numbers and it seems as though you're going to be over, but you're going to give me that information to just verify. Because I did have a question Brian brought up as far as the salaries. Because what we were told is that you had hired all the employees that you needed. You had made all the promotions. So I, I guess my question is, how was it that your salaries would be coming under when you've done all the hiring and the promotions?
Well, again, we have not done all the hiring. We were in the process of onboarding approximately 20 civilian staff when this hit. We were unable to complete the process because city hall was closed. People were unable to continue to bring paperwork and things of that nature to civil service as well as for our sub-block attendants. There's a four and a half week training program that they have to go through before they would count and be available to then beginning a, in essence, a field training program within the cell block. So that's where we're under on the salary. So those positions have been identified, interviews conducted, people chosen, but the process stopped dead at the door. Currently as well, we have 47 police recruits that have for the last five weeks not been at the academy and working in conjunction with the commissioner and the director of the police training academy. They have just restarted online education this week for the academy. So that is going to delay the arrival of those 47 recruits by as much as possibly three to four months in terms of them actually hitting the department, then beginning their four month field training, and then eventually counting for manpower. So again, as this thing shut down a lot of our operations, now those legs and salaries and other things started to catch up, which is driving the minimum manpower overtime. But again, when you balance the two of them, it looks like, you know, we're, we're still going to be on par for our budget for this year.
So you're, so the, the one piece is that the cell block attendance, that's underneath the police. But you're saying the sub-block attendance, you're under salary for them. But when they went through training, they do not get paid by the, don't they still get paid by the police department when they go through training?
Yes, they get paid.
Now, what is, what is that salary? Is it, is not the same salary as when they become a sworn officer, is it?
Well, a cell block attendant is a civilian position. So their salary is the same from the day they get hired through the training until they're actually in the position. It is not a sworn position, so it is not a police officer position.
No, I'm talking about the police officers. You said that some of them are still through the process, they haven't been able to be trained? Is that what you were talking about, though, the police officers?
So, no, no, the, the lack of being able to begin the actual hiring and training that has been for civilian staff. So cell block attendants, report technicians, a garage mechanic, jobs of that nature. The sworn side, the police recruits, started the academy. They were approximately seven weeks in and then the academy went on hold for the last four weeks. They have now just come up with the curriculum to begin the distance learning for the academy. So the cell block salary, or I'm sorry, the sworn salaries, positions have been filled, training has begun. It's more on the civilian side, which is the report technicians, garage mechanic, as well as the cell block attendants. The cell block is a large piece of our overtime, because there's minimum staffing levels, both on the male side of the, the cell block as well as the female side, as well as the report technician side. And for instance, if you have a shortage in the male side of the cell block, a male or female cell block attendant can fill in for that. If you have a shortage on the female side, only a female attendant may work there. So that drives our overtime. If there's no available female cell block attendants to fill in for that overtime, we actually have to bring a female police officer in on overtime to fill into the cell block. So that's a critical piece of our operation that we're, after this meeting, actually going to begin laying out how we're going to begin training the cell block attendants, looking at, can we get one or two weeks of the four weeks done via Zoom, this type of avenue, and then bring them in for two weeks of practicals after the May 15 deadline? But we've decided we, we have to get that moving.
What is your contingency plan if we don't get the 65 million?
Well, our contingency plan is the mayor has an outline contingent plan with citywide. So we will, um, you know, get our, work with the mayor with his plan.
Can you give us some details, some, something, just a broad brush of what, what that plan entails?
We have nothing, I have nothing in writing, all I, all I know is the mayor would have a, you know, plan that he will discuss with each department. And, and from there, that's where we will go with, if the, you know, if, if we have to go to that contingency plan. But I, I strongly feel that, you know, I, me personally, I think that we might not, we should, we wouldn't have to go to that, because I've got confidence in believing what the mayor is saying that we will get that much. But if we don't, then we have to sit down and come up with this plan.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Estrich? I, I know we've been having these conversations, you, you all said you're confident. Have you had further confirmation or information that says that this is going to happen? Your, yes, Mike?
You're muted, Commissioner.
Okay, good morning. I've had further conversations with our mayor and he's had conversations with our congressman. And he feels very confident that yes, we're going to receive some funding from the federal government.
Thank you.
Before we go to our unions, if they have anything, council member? All right, I know that we have union representation on. Just want to pause and see if you had anything that you wanted to add to the discussion of.
Council President, earlier, all of the union reps told me that they were going to observe for the departments that they have people that work in, but they were going to save their comments until their own allotted time, which is at the end of the day, they're, they're last on the list.
All right. Hearing none other, thank you, Police Commissioner and to all your staff. And if we have a need for a callback, we'll let you before the end of the business day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief of Staff was next?
Next, we're joined by Commissioner Ronaldo for Buffalo Fire. Following him will be Commissioner Finn for DPW.
Good morning, Commissioner. And I know that you have already made a statement to the common council about your budget. Is there anything, Chief of Staff, that was requested for fire from council members during those discussions?
Yes, sir, we had a question from Councilmember Wyatt, which is, is there any analysis of how changing the hours of the firefighters last year helps the overtime numbers?
Commissioner, you can answer that?
One second, please. Can you hear?
We can hear you.
Unfortunately, I did not receive that question. However, I, I can tell you that there were savings because of a, obviously, we're going through a 24 hour shift that left one less shift change, because prior to that, the recent CBA, we're working two nine-hour shifts followed by two night, 15-hour nights, which, which meant that we're relieving at 1700 hours. We're starting to shift at 0800, we're leaving at 1700. So we're, there were some significant savings just by going through the 24-hour shift, yes.
Councilmember Wyatt, did that answer your question or did you need additional information?
I need additional information, Commissioner, that's not going to cut it for me. I need.
I can get you the numbers, Councilman. I didn't, I didn't receive that, that particular question, although I would have had it in more detail for you.
Okay, yeah, I really need some numbers and, you know, because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking through this process and that, let's say someone calls in from the 24-hour shift. So then someone has to cover that person, right?
Yes, however, there are significant savings in that. And actually, the union actually tried to challenge us and we just won it in arbitration. If an individual member calls out sick, they're charged the full 24 hours of sick time, whether they're halfway through their shift, whether they're 15 minutes into their shift, an hour into their shift. So that was contractually agreed to. The union had issues with it. They took us to arbitration and we just recently won that arbitration.
Okay, yeah, but.
Not wanted, and we not wanted, it would, there would have been a significant cost to the city.
I mean, it reduces their sick time, but it doesn't, how does that cover? If someone calls in, someone has to cover that shift, right? You have to have the minimum man hours?
Oh, correct, yeah, if someone called, if someone calls in anytime after 0800 in the morning, yes, we would have to call somebody, yes. So if they called in at say, 12 o'clock noon, we, we bring somebody in for the remainder of that 24-hour shift. Yes, that's correct.
So that's, that's, so there, there's a possibility someone could be getting 24 hours overtime for being caught for, so that person calling in, correct?
Oh, yes, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, so when I started doing the math and I'm calculating, I'm like, well, how does that work? I mean, I, I, you know, I'm looking at the overtime numbers and it doesn't seem as though there's the greatest savings that we thought we were gonna get. But that's why I'm asking for the analysis in which it may be a longer term thing that we'll see a savings as opposed to immediate. But just want to be able to look at it, because the contingency, what is the contingency if we don't get this money? And I know that everyone is confident we're going to get it, but if we don't get it, what is the contingency of us being able to, to do what we need to do to make sure the public is safe and address the issues in our city for the fire?
Let me, let me address, excuse me, Councilman, let me address overtime in a little, a little broader sense. Okay, the shifted differential is a very small portion of our overtime or how would it affect our overtime positively? Most of our overtime savings is in, come in the form of staffing, having adequate staffing. I think I mentioned it before, we have a recruit class of 50 individuals right now that was temporarily, temporarily suspended. Had that class not been suspended, they would be graduating in early June, just in time for our summer vacations where we have a number of individuals off. But even having said that, even without the 50 new members having graduated in the June timeframe, we're still doing extremely well when it comes to overtime. We're budgeted, I understand, right now for 5.1 million. Year-to-date, right now, we're at 6.7 million. We're steadily, the trend is steadily in our favor and declining. And, and that's because of a number of issues. Like I said, number one is the staffing, we keep the department fully staffed, thanks to the mayor, his initiatives and administration, rigorous enforcement of our home confinement program, which means we're checking on people who are out sick and injured to make sure they're at home. So our sick numbers are way down as compared to previous years. Also, our, the Buffalo Retirement Incentive Program, we're getting a number of people to take part in that, are injured on duty personnel, which is going to free up a lot of salary and benefits as well. So taking, you know, all of these into account, that's where the majority of our savings comes from. The shifted differential, there is a small savings there, but just a tip of the iceberg as compared to some of these other areas.
What, what percentage of the overtime goes to the line people as opposed to the lieutenants and the folks that are higher up? What percentage of your overtime goes to the lying people as opposed to those in professional positions? Captains, battalion chiefs and that?
No, I understood, actually, the, all the officers are part, part and parcel of our, of our line company. Every, every piece of arrest, every company we call companies has a, either a lieutenant or captain in charge. Every, uh, every piece of arrest, every company we call them companies has a, either a lieutenant or captain in charge. So they're, they're part of our, uh, also our battalion chiefs and division chiefs are also part of those lines. So all of those personnel are figured into our overtime costs. Our ancillary departments are fire prevention, for instance, fire re, fire investigation unit, uh, our training bureau, our communications, uh, department. Those departments have been scaled, uh, way back. Typically, they were getting, working the four tens, a flex schedule of four tens and getting a, uh, another ten hours and actually twenty hours of pay, ten hours a week, twenty hours of pay in overtime. So we did away with that. That's no longer the case. So there's gonna be significant savings from those departments going forward as well.
So, so, eh, for example, if someone calls in, they, they can't, they're sick or whatever. Who, who, who do you call next to come in for them? Is it a staff person or is it gotta be a lieutenant or battalion chief or captain? Who's, who's the person that comes in for, for that, to cover?
Well, it's a, it's an automated system and it's actually run by the union. And depending on, we call, uh, we have acting officers, which means if someone has, if a firefighter has three years of work on the job, they can act as lieutenant or as a captain. And a captain can work as a battalion chief, a battalion chief could work as a division chief. So it's called acting up. And we do that as often as we can because there's cost savings there as well. Instead of calling in somebody, we have an acting officer who's already part of the crew.
You, you said the union makes that decision?
Not their decision. They, they run the program. It's an automated program, uh, robocalls. The member will get a call, uh, you know, to report to such and such, and they have opportunity to decline it. If they decline it, normally it goes to the next person.
Nah, okay. Okay. Thanks. So you'll give me that right up? Um, how long will it take you to give us that?
I can have the, I can have that to you by the end of the day.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Uh, any other council member? Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, Council President. Morning, Commissioner. Um, just a question for you about overtime. Um, this is obviously, this comes up every year. It's a concern of mine. Um, how high that number does get some years. I know in eighteen nineteen, we were talking just shy of seven million. Um, this year you're budgeted for, and, uh, this is on the firefighting services line, you're budgeted at, um, three point eight. Um, you're headed towards six million now as year to date, um, and then budget again for three point eight next year. I know you discussed, um, the switching to twenty-four hour shifts and, um, the hiring of the new class. I think it will put you at a, um, fully staffed department. So do you think that those moves, and if there are any other that you can share with us, we'll get that number down to where it needs to be?
Uh, I believe so, Councilman. And, uh, once again, I'll just reiterate, uh, a few of the points that I, that I just made. Uh, I know we're budgeted for, uh, X amount of dollars overtime hours. I really believe that we're poised for success going forward. Everything being taken into consideration, uh, the fifty recruits being added, uh, to the line, uh, the enforcement of our, uh, sick home confinement rules and the Buffalo Retirement Incentive Program, along with our regular rate of retirements. So, well, once again, the key of this is having a fully staffed department, having a full staffed department and the commitment that the mayor, uh, along with the administration has, is going a long ways, will go a long ways towards driving these overtime costs out. And we have gone steadily down over the last two years.
Thank you. Um, another, a follow-up question is, I know another tool that you've been using to try and drive that number down a little bit is the dynamic staffing um, protocol, which was agreed upon. I know obviously in the, the last two negotiated contracts. Um, so if through fully staffing the department, moving to the twenty-four hour shifts and additional measures being taken by the department, we get closer to a realistic and reasonable overtime number, I would like moving forward to, to have a conversation about dynamic staffing. I can tell you that the, the residents of the city Buffalo that I represent, um, are vehemently opposed to, to that, that, um, stipulation in the contract. And again, I, I, I know that it was voted on and both, by both sides, but, um, it's, it's a policy that, um, kind of weighs cost savings versus overall safety, in my opinion, and it's something that I would like to see revisited uh, down the line. Again, if we're getting to a point where our overtime number is much more reasonable, um, compared to some of the, the previous years and historically, I'd like to see that addressed because again, I, I don't think you can put a dollar amount on public safety, um, whether it be to people or their property. So again, um, moving forward, when we come to additional contracts, I'd, I'd have a tough time voting for contracts that has dynamic staffing in it because again, the residents in my district, um, are adamantly opposed to that, that stipulation in the contract. Um, with, along with the information that you are providing to Councilmember Wyatt and the rest of the council, can you provide us a list of all the fire, say for the last two years, we'll go with the number of times dynamic staffing's been instituted and what firehouse was closed, how many times?
Uh, of course, and I could, if I could speak, uh, very briefly on it.
Of course.
I would appreciate it. Uh, and I can give you some, uh, figures I have at my fingertips and I will go back further, eight years. Uh, so from, uh, January first, twenty nineteen to January first, twenty twenty, we used dynamic staffing a total of a hundred thirty-five times, which equal to a saving in personnel costs of just a little over a million dollars. Uh, also some other stats from, uh, January first, twenty nineteen to twenty-eight February of twenty twenty, uh, firehouses were placed out of service a total of a hundred fifty-one times. Uh, maybe to, uh, a million, uh, just a little over a million, a million one hundred thirty thousand and some change. So there is a significant savings in personnel costs through, through the use of dynamic staffing. And I, you know, I just also want to reiterate, you know, public safety is obviously number one on our mind. But it's a program that's been successfully managed, uh, for over five years now. And, uh, I know the union local twenty-two has put up a lot of misinformation and in my opinion, they're waging a misinformation, uh, campaign and they're alarming our residents unnecessarily. But more to follow on that, and I will go back further if you want the two-year numbers. I actually have a, a spreadsheet that shows what companies were closed when and what dates.
Yeah, and again, if you could just provide them the, um, the list of which firehouses were closed, how many times out of that a hundred and thirty-five times? And I know that the, the union has taken umbrage with the policy, but in my conversations with them, I made it very clear that I, eh, this is a mutually agreed upon portion of your contract. So, um, nothing can be done about it right now, but I just would like to have that conversation moving forward.
Of course, anytime. And I do have those figures. If I can write up this meeting, I could send for those to you, Councilman.
Great. Thanks so much, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, if I could, um, on, on that topic, and, um, I think all of us have had the conversation before. And it obviously deals around safety. So, and I don't know if this would be readily available, uh, because not just the, for me, not just the numbers of when there has been dynamic staffing, but if there have been fires during those dynamic staffing, uh, times where other firehouses had to respond and what those response times, that's something easily or available, um?
Uh, actually, I, I forwarded that information to, uh, the council, uh, maybe six months or so ago, a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, a three-month study of dynamic staffing, uh, shows the first-in companies, how often first-in companies, uh, arrived versus the second-in company, third-in companies or some, uh, companies that were shifted. And it showed, the study showed that thirty-three percent of the time, basically a third of the time, the first-in company, meaning the company that was supposed to be first in, had a fire, was not first in, uh, whether it's through dynamic staffing, whether it, another call, it could have been on the EMS call, they could have been down to shop, getting a tire fixed. They could run the training bureau. Uh, we could have up to five companies a day out of service for, for any one time. So it's not just dynamic staffing. I mean, it was, uh, I think people have a, uh, and, you know, people look at the fire station, they know, and they assume that that piece of address is gonna be in there twenty-four hours a day when in fact it's not. So whether it's through dynamic staffing or, you know, by virtue of these companies being on another call, to be on, uh, a PR call, any number of reasons why that company would not be present. So once again, I can re-forward, uh, that PowerPoint presentation to you and it has all.
I mean, and it doesn't have to be a PowerPoint. I know that could take some time formatting, you know? It's the information that I think, uh, is important to the council. Um, so if that could be updated to where we are now, I think that was a three-month study.
It was, correct, yes.
So I think what would be, um, of interest, eh, eh, at least to this council member is we're looking back at the year. So I think to, um, eh, get the data of the year, uh, of the budget year, um, so that as we move forward, we might have some more information. As, as President Protop just said, we know that it was already voted on. This isn't a question for me of whether it should be there or not. Eh, I think we, down the line, we're gonna have to kick that can down the road, obviously. Um, but the safety of, of people, uh, at the end of the day. So if we could have that report, and again, it does not need to be in a PowerPoint. It just needs, we need to be able to see the numbers.
Of course, I can get that to you. Eh, it will take a few days, but I'll get to your updated figures, Councilman. Thank you.
That's fine. We got a couple of days. Thank you. Any other council member? All right, council member.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, go on record here for the Commissioner and just say that, uh, similar to the South Buffalo residents, residents in Lovejoy, um, you know, are not big fans of this dynamic staffing and they take peace and comfort and see, you know, their firehouse open. But I do understand that it's agreement, uh, between the, uh, union and, uh, the station. So, uh, just wanted to get that out there that, uh, you know, Lovejoy residents definitely call their councilmen and let them, let them know, uh, that it's closed every single time the, the station at twenty-eight is closed. And it, I, I'm interested in seeing those numbers you provide to me. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Any other council member? All righty. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Stay safe.
You're very welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Staff, who's next?
Next, we'll be joined by Commissioner Mike Finn for DPW and will be followed by Commissioner Herndon Hill for HR.
All right, is the Commissioner on?
He's, uh, connecting now, sir.
Commissioner, we just wait, uh, Commissioner Finn, we're just waiting for your audio to connect. Is Commissioner Herndon Hill on standby in case this takes a while?
Yes, he, yes, she is, sir.
And then we had some problems on our last call, correct? Trying to get the audio.
Those with Commissioner Shell, um, but yes, Commissioner L is ready to go now if you want to switch.
He says yes. Um, we'll go over to Commissioner Herndon Hill from the Department of Human Resources while the audio is connecting on Commissioner Finn. Commissioner Herndon Hill, are you on? We, we just lost you on video. You were there and disappeared. All right, either one, whoever gets the audio first, we'll start with them to continue, keep this mo, meeting moving. Commissioner Finn, I think you are audio.
I think I'm, I'm connected if everyone can hear me.
Yep, we're gonna go to you, uh, while we get back to, we'll come back to Department of Human Resources. Commissioner Finn, I know you've already made your statement, uh, for the council. Uh, ob, obviously, you know, we are in workshops. Was there anything, Chief of Staff, that was asked of the Commissioner from council members that we need to ask?
Now, uh, Council President, none of the questions asked of DPW requested a response for workshops.
All right. Was there anything else additional, Commissioner, that you wanted to add, uh, since you last met with us?
I, uh, I think I covered everything in our initial presentation. Happy to answer any further questions to the council, however.
All right. So council members, are there any questions of our Commissioner of Public Works? Commissioner, um, just a, a question. We've talked about this a lot, uh, well, two things. In last budget, we had a position, uh, for street infection person, I believe it was called. Um, was that person ever? Commissioner, can you?
I, you, you dropped off as you were asking the, the question, it, it sounded like.
I'll start again. Can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
All right. So this was about the last budget and I'm, I'm trying to find, I'm sure it's still here, uh, in which we had a position for, um, I'll just get to it. We had a lot of complaints about potholes. Um, the council requests there be a person who would just be in charge of that program. Um, was that person ever hired?
Uh, we did not fill that, that position as of right now. Uh, the plan going into this, uh, current budget uh, is that we've reorganized, uh, that position as far as it, it was put in budgetarily uh, to a Director of Info Structure and Quality of Life. Uh, and that individual, uh, would take charge of the duties that were, uh, foreseen. Uh, I believe within that, um, pothole position, for lack of a better term, uh, as well as, uh, the mayor's impact team and work towards a, a more efficient, uh, output of our work within both the, the pothole crew, uh, the mayor's impact team and some of our other teams uh, who do work, uh, that is seasonal. Because a, as you know, potholes has a season. Uh, the mayor's impact team does a lot of different work all, all year round, but they get pretty busy in the summer when cut and cleans are a big uh, thing. So by putting those departments, uh, those divisions really together uh, in a more cohesive manner, we can spread folks around and I believe provide better service uh, across our, our entire, um, suite of, of services that, that are, uh, requested of us from our residents.
So, and eh, so would this person fulfill the mission of, of the reason that we asked for, uh, that position to be filled, number one? And number two, was there a problem in finding a person? Because I've, I asked every single month. And the reason I asked every single month is because we told our constituents that position would be filled. And, um, it never was. So is this person a supervisory person now over personnel? Because the intent in the discussion was that there would be one person who would handle that and handle constituents. Um, because our offices inundated, uh, with those calls, not only during pothole season, but as you know, for instance, in the fruit belt, um, about the sinkholes and that, that'll be my third question. So, um, is this person in supervisory position or will they be dealing directly with that?
Both. Uh, and to answer your, your first question about the, uh, fulfilling the mission, uh, the answer is yes. Uh, and a, after kind of thinking through what I understood, the, the mission of that to be, uh, I think that that person needs to be in, in a position to both, uh, communicate and to get the job done. Uh, because to have a person who just is talking about things that, that we can and can't do and not overseeing a crew who can actually go and get things done, I, I, I didn't think that that was fulfilling the mission, uh, that was intended. Uh, so by, uh, putting that in, into a, a higher level, uh, position that, uh, has a crew that is available to them, uh, as well as uh, the tools that is needed to respond to constituents, council members, uh, and anyone who's looking for information or, or response. Uh, that was the direction that we would like to go.
With this person, and this is part of the problem and why we asked for it last year, I will admit, I'm a little disappointed to hear that it was never filled, um, and that there was never in, information that came back to the council um, as we stand in front of our block clubs and as that was a request. Um, and obviously as a request, that would be the choice of the administration. Um, but at the end of the day, um, that, that was not filled. Would this person be available for block clubs and others, whether it's the snow season in which we, in which, by the way, you do a great job, your staff does a great job and you do a very good job with, with, working with in, in responding, uh, to the potholes. But the, the, the connection to the community, is this person gonna be available for the community and be a supervisor? Will council member, would I have them come out to community? And be a supervisor? Will council members would have them come out to community meetings and those other things? Especially when we're hearing the complaints of either snow or potholes or whatever it is in infrastructure.
Yes, uh and that's, that's why I felt it was important to uh upgrade it to a director level title. Uh, so that it was uh someone who could be responsive to our, our block clubs and, and communities and available to them. Similar to how our existing directors are right now. Um, a, as well as deputy commissioners. Um, but also uh in charge of a crew who could respond. Uh, so that we weren't having the uh, let me get back to you at the block clubs. It's, you go to the block clubs, you hear the issues. And that person is able to commit to, I'm gonna get it done with the fo- folks that I have available to me, not. Like, I gotta go back and talk with, you know, the person who's in charge of that and, and, and get back to you. I, I think this will provide a, a more streamlined uh level of service. Uh, and I'm definitely looking forward to getting it uh going in, in that direction.
Alright, I trust your opinion on that because you are the professional in that area. I know that we've talked about the sinkholes in the fruit belt and I believe that's in the capital budget, not in the operating budget. I'm not sure if we had a line in there, um but while we're talking about budgets and so that as we're moving forward with this person. Um, who you're proposing to hire, would this person also be handling the supervision of the study? That has been requested um last year for the sinkholes and the year before.
Uh, that, that study, which we did uh receive the responses for the RFP uh back just a, a few weeks ago. And we'll be moving forward with that very quickly. Um, but I, I envisioned that that study be um overseen by the city engineer. Uh, Nolan Skipper, um you know, I, I'm open to that conversation. I know that's, that, that's something that um. Uh, is, is important to you and we, we wanna uh complete that. Uh, but I was seeing that as more of a, a technical review. Uh, there could be some um operational things that are handled by the Director of Infrastructure and Quality of Life. Once we kind of get to the root of the problem. Well, but I felt like that was more, more of something that needed a. A higher level of, of engineering and technical analysis with a consultant. Uh, and that was to be overseen by the city engineer.
Yeah, and I, I have no problem with the city. I totally agree with you with the engineer. Uh, but the engineer may not be available to go to the block clubs in that area to explain to the residents. You know, where we're at, a lot of times the residents are looking outside. They'll see things happening, not have anybody who is able on the ground to be able to go to them and say. Here's where we're studying and not only to say to the residents, but also to hear the residents. Because I think that there is some information out there that the people in the fruit belt only have. And that we may miss a big part of the study that needs to occur. So I would encourage you um to utilize both of them at some level of this. And hopefully uh you'll get that person hired uh very quickly uh so that. Uh, what we promised constituents last year uh will at least happen in this year.
Absolutely. Thank you for that uh suggestion and I'll, I'll certainly stay in touch with your office as we advance that.
Thank you, council members.
Council President?
Yes, council member.
Thank you, um Commissioner. You, your department is probably one of the largest departments and we want to make sure you have the capacity. In terms of manpower to do the work that you need to do. Besides this position that is vacant, how many vacant positions do you have within the department?
Vacancies within Public Works is, is always a, a, a moving target. I think uh more than any department and you, you suggested that ours is, is one of the bigger, uh we're certainly the most diverse. Um, and we're consistently having turnover between retirements and uh promotions and, and bringing in new people. Um, but ours, it's a little more tricky on our side because we're. Uh, it, it's not like we can bring in a police class and there's, there's forty new people who, who can come in. We have so many different titles. We gotta work through the process of posting in, in civil service. Um, so to, that's, that's kind of a long way of saying I don't have an exact answer for you right now. That's something I could, I can certainly follow up on. Uh, but it'll be a snapshot in time of the vacancies that we have as of today. Uh, and there's ebbs and flows of, of our vacancies throughout the year, uh based on some of what I just described.
Well, as you mentioned, a snapshot in real time. Uh, to give us an idea how many vacancies you have within the department currently. Uh, as you're right, I agree through attrition, retirements, sick time and all those uh. Uh, other matters, um there is a lack of manpower. And the people that end up suffering at the very end are the people that are calling in with regards to complaints that they may have or work that needs to get done. Uh, you have a huge department and I give you credit for managing this huge department. But I understand and I want to make sure that you have the capacity to do the work that needs to get done. Uh, considering all of the things you mentioned, retirements, attrition, sick time. Uh, the process, the vetting, all those things, we want to make sure that you have the capacity. So that you can take care of problems like in the fruit belt and other parts of the city. We want to make sure you have the capacity to do that as well. So if you can just give us a snapshot of vacancies, that would help us as well.
Other council members? Council member Wyatt?
I thank you, Council President. Um, Commissioner, first of all, I want to thank you for getting the cones and the racks out for us today for the COVID testing. I truly appreciate it, um being able to get people in and out. Um, secondly, the person that we're just talking about as far as Council President, the position. Was that the liaison position that we talked about last year? Is that similar to the liaison position that we were supposed to have? From your, your office of working with.
I believe that was separate. There were. Yes, um and I, I believe that that was separate. Uh, and there were. Two titles, one was a, a, at least in, i- in my vision, meant to be more uh on the ground oriented. And one more uh liaison to common council to help to uh enhance the communication with council offices. Uh, and I believe with the general community as well, which are, are in some ways analogous.
Did we ever hire that person?
No, that, that, that title uh remains in, in the budget. Uh, but with the reorganization that I described as part of um my discussion with the Council President. Uh, that's all part of this. There's a support being provided to the. Uh, Director of Infrastructure and, and Quality of Life, uh as well as um. Uh, tools uh in order to make sure that we're fulfilling the intent of that.
Okay, so do you see that position that we talked about with Council President? Those are just, those are gonna be two separate positions? The person, the liaison and the person that's gonna be assisting and fulfilling potholes and kind of emergency calls, things like that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other council members? Alright, Commissioner, it looks like uh that's it. And uh if we need a callback for tomorrow, we will let you know as soon as possible. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We now have Human Resources who has been on the line and we'll see if they can click in now with video and audio. Good morning, we have your audio. Nope, we see the words Gigi Herndon Hill. But you can begin without video and, and as I'm working through that, we can, will, your is, is more important. Commit. Commissioner, um is there anything other than you have already presented to us that you needed to add um concerning the? Am I the only one not hearing her? Uh, Council Chief of Staff?
Can't hear her either, but her audio is fine. She's not on mute. Um, it's got an issue on her end there.
Alright, we'll give them a second to try to work out uh whatever issue they're having. Now we can hear you.
Right. Okay, we keep, we losing, it keep making and I'm connecting, we're wondering if it makes more sense.
Are, are you, are you, you utilizing C D R Wi-Fi? That's why I didn't come in. You, you may be uh experiencing some connection problems. I don't, I don't know. Um, but is it possible for you to just call in on a landline?
Yes, Council President, we can have her do that. Uh, if she doesn't mind taking a little minute with her staff to drop that. Use the call-in credentials we've already shared with the executive branch. And in the meantime, we were to be followed. I was like, Commissioner, you all set?
Yes, I think so. Um, we had someone take off the, the internet, the, the Wi-Fi, I'm sorry.
Great. Not a problem. Is there anything else that you wanted to share with us, Commissioner, uh since um our last meeting?
Oh, I, I believe we ans- answered the questions that you asked originally.
Alright, Chief of Staff, was there any questions from council members that we are waiting on to answer?
No, sir, not at this time.
Council members, we have before the Department of Human Resources. Are there any questions for uh the Department of Human Resources? Council member Wyatt?
Council President, Commissioner, can you, um, I know we had a conversation about if there were layoffs. That you would have to go by titles, seniority. Can you send us a write-up of what that process would be?
I don't know what's happening, but we are, we are back. It's, it's coming and going. I, I don't know. It, we, we lost. Did you have a question? Did anyone have a question?
Yeah, this is Council. I would, I would just ask him the question. Good morning. Um, we had a conversation about if there were layoffs before. That it would go by title, seniority. Can you send us a write-up of what that process would actually be?
Sure.
Good, so would that, do you need a day or so? Or how, how long would it take you to get us that?
Council member, she's gone again. Um, she's coming in and out.
Okay, can we just, did we send her that, Council President?
Sure. Are there any other questions that we need to send Human Resources, council members? Sure, if we're gonna be able to continue.
We're back, we're back.
Okay, did you hear Council Member Wyatt's question?
About the layoffs?
Yes.
To send a plan, a layoff plan?
Yes, if you can just give us what that would look like. Uh, cause I know we had a conversation about the titles and the seniority, just what that process would be for us. So that we just have it in our back pocket just in case.
Yes, we'll be glad to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anytime.
Alright, um any other questions of council members? Alright, thank you to the Department of Human Resources and uh. And I think you're in the building, so you might want to call MIS and have them work on uh. Your connection in case we have to do a callback. Callbacks will be done tomorrow if needed. Thank you.
Council President, uh we have recall scheduled for Wednesday starting at ten. And next we would be joined by uh Corporation Counsel Tim Ball, who is already connected. And after that, we'll be followed by Commissioner Otis Barker for Community Services.
Thank you. Uh, somebody. Somebody, please mute um Herndon Hill and others. We'll not mute it. Whoever has administration. Thank you, Corporation Counsel for being with us and also um for your last appearance. Was there anything other than what you have already? Presented to the council uh that you wanted to share with the.
Uh, no further information, Council President. Uh, the audio is a little choppy, so forgive me. But um as I had mentioned before, our uh budget was uh reduced by five point one five percent. And I think we've, we've trimmed it and cut it down as much as we can to get the job done. And as I mentioned, we're repurposing our uh staff because during this downtime, we expect. Have a period of latency because claims will be down for a period of time because there's less human activity. And we'll be able to go kind of full board towards revenue producing things like insurance claims. And uh surplus money claims that we have with the state. So that we can be sure that we're on a solid budgetary footing with respect to the Law Department.
Thank you, sir. Um, I know we had some, uh, and this is a workshop, so we had a lot of discussion, uh good discussion about. Um, the addition um of an attorney for the council. Um, I, I, I don't know if Council Member Noah Kowski, we sent out to every council member. There has been an amendment to the resolution that was supposed to be sent out to all of your mailboxes. It was just finished when we came on the call. Uh, Council Member Noah Kowski, did you want to uh, uh, talk about that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, uh, there was a, an amendment, uh, a resolution that, that has been submitted. Um, we did take under fact and research of the Corporation Counsel that the council cannot create. A Corporation Counsel to the council, but could amend its council rules to affix said position of a legal or a legislative policy advisor. To the council rules that fixated in central staff.
And what that will do so that the public would understand the discussion of the um ninety uh some thousand dollars. For that position in the resolution, um that would not be, that would not happen immediately. What would occur is that later through attrition of staff or openings. Um, in our budget that we already have, uh that position would then be filled and it would be in our council rules. It has been filed, it will be before the council. So the question of a new position at a hundred thousand dollars, which uh was proposal. Um, will not, um, if, if the resolution is agreed upon in our next meeting would not. Um, be before us at this time. However, the position would be in creating that position. Uh, but it would happen not through any layoffs of our present staff, not through any uh letting go of our present staff. Our present staff would stay our present staff and through attrition, uh the council in its rules. Uh, would agree to hire a legal advisor. Um, and not uh to include that in that, that position in this budget. Uh, it, does that summarize the um resolution, Council Kowski?
It does.
Alright, uh, anything else worth legal? Council member Wingo?
Yeah, so the, the attrition though, with all of our positions being appointed by the council members. What council member is going to have one of their staff retire? Or even maybe transition to another department in government and leave? Who's going to be willing to not get a replacement for that position so that we can fill this current? New advisor position. I'm just thinking if I have several appointments. And one of my appointments, one of my, one of my appointments leave. Am I going to be willing then to sacrifice my appointment? For the sake of this not increasing the budget idea, so that we could all have an attorney?
Um, I, if you, if the question is which one would, I'll tell you this. Um, if it meant for me uh having the opportunity to appoint a person. Or having this council have a, an attorney who is able to advise it. I would give up uh all of my appointees if they left for it. Um, I think it is the same way in which we appoint a chief of staff. Um, we all basically agree on that, or at least the majority uh do that. Um, and so at the end of the day, I think it would be a a discussion we have to have at, you know, by by settling in or by approving the resolution that has been put forward that I fully support. Um, at the end of the day, I think it is about asking what is the skill set that is needed for the only legislative body in the city of Buffalo, which is the common council. And so I think that any other questions?
You I I used, you were saying something. You said that you think that, and you kind of cut out. I didn't hear that, the rest of your your thought.
Okay, I'll I'll try to summarize it again. Am I cutting out or is it the?
No, just the last, just the last thing you said uh, about cutting out. But so let me just, let me just give you my opinion. If we should lose appointments for the sake of a position that will be redundant, we already have an attorney. That means the people now are going to have less people working on their behalf in these offices, of course, of which already are inundated with quality of life concerns, policy concerns, legislative concerns. You may be willing to give up eloquent appointments, but for Maston, I'm not willing to give up any of my appointments at all, so that we can have a position that we already have. That that's my personal opinion, and I wanted to make sure that uh, I put that out there for the record.
Thank you, sir. Um, and just so that I can address the redundancy, um, I disagree with that. At this point, we do not have an attorney um, that is just assigned to the council. We have a great attorney um, that also has other duties. But for those of us who have legislation waiting to be, to move forward and other things that need to be forward, it is not a I'm doing the same job as everyone else. The second thing is that this is not a suggestion that your personal office and the resolution does not state that. This, the resolution talks about council staff. So your personal office would still be able to have the agreed-upon budgeted number of people in that office. Um, so it does not reduce. So Maston could, if that is in fact, so I want to be clear. This isn't about elicit giving up personal uh, persons. It is about appointees. And I don't think uh, I'm going to, you know, that we have to step away from the conversation, but just ensuring that we have the skill set um, on the in-count tab uh, for the council uh, for the benefit of the legislature. Anyone else?
No, I I don't know what, I don't know what that means, but what I do know is that uh, as it relates to what we discussed last week, Corporation Council Tim Tim Ball did say that it would be a redundancy if we go back and look at the script. But that's that's be, that's beside the point of this at this time. We'll we'll, like you said, we'll talk about this when the resolution comes up.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Well, uh, Corporation Council, oh, Council Member Wyatt?
Thank you, Council President. Um, Tim, if we are have a financial issue uh, for next year and we have claims, how does that, how do we address that? Is there a priority that those claims have to get paid before we do anything else?
Uh, Tim Ball, Corporation Council, there is um, claims are batched by the full faith and credit of the city. So anything that was reduced to a judgment would have to be paid first. Uh, but claims are also bondable. So if you got hit with a large verdict that you weren't anticipating, it's customary for municipalities to bond that out over a period of time, as opposed to taking the hit all at once. Um, we don't have anything that is in that catastrophic realm. By that, I mean over five million dollars. So we have a a claims portfolio that doesn't lend itself to that type of eventuality right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Council members, anyone else?
Just a quick question. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ball, just after, uh, maybe we could have an uh, an offline conversation. I just want to have a conversation as the chairman of claims, just to go over some of those things, so I have a better understanding.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think it'll still be online in some form, but it'll be offline, online. If you know what I mean.
Virtual. Yeah. Yeah, I just I just have a bunch of questions.
Have to wear a mask to have a conversation, in other words.
Yep.
Any other council members? Operation Council, thank you and thank you uh, for the fine job that you and your staff do. And uh, I don't see her uh, face. Oh, yes, I do. I see her uh, right there. And thank you um, uh, for Karen uh, Gordon, who has been uh, uh, in many places at many times. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Stay safe.
To you, sir. Next department?
Council President, the next department should be Community Services. However, I don't see a number match up for Commissioner Barker. However, the next one was supposed to be Strategic Planning, Mayor Executive, and we do have them ready to go.
Alrighty, good. Strategic planning is on. I'm not seeing them, but you see them. So whoever is on, if you could, ah, there he is, connecting to auto right now. Uh, so we'll give him a second to, ah, you are on. Good to see you.
Here we go. Well, sir.
Do you have anything else to add to our conversation um, of your presentation? We know we've already heard it. Anything else?
No, I don't think so. I think I hit most of the highlights. Uh, again, any of the changes that were in the budget uh, for this year or so, uh, asked, uh, answered the questions. But um, certainly available to answer any others, uh, if there are any.
Great. Council members, the uh, questions for uh, Chief of Staff, do we have anything that was already in the parking lot?
In the, I'm sorry, sir?
Do we have any questions from council members from the last time we?
Negative, sir. There's nothing specifically requested for OSP or three one one.
Sounds good. Uh, council members, anything for the Office of Strategic Planning? All right. Seeing none. Um, thank you, Mr. Mahaffey.
Very good. All right. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Next, next uh,
I'm done.
Yes, you you're done.
All right. Just want to remind you, this is also the Division of Citizen Services as well. So there's a whole nother division. Thank you, guys.
Was, okay, thank you. Those together?
No, they're not. But.
Okay, were you next? Okay, put you all in together under Brendan uh, Mahaffey. So if there was something else to be. Next department? I'm sorry, Commissioner Estridge?
Which is why they uh, Citizen Services and OSP and Real Estate are all under the mayor's office, and that's why they were listed together.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Next department?
Still no word from Commissioner Barker. The next after him would be Permits and Inspections, but we just jumped through two departments early, so I have to try to get them on the call now, sir.
All right. Um, while you are getting them on the call, we can go to Administration and Finance. Is that okay, Commissioner?
Sure.
All right, council members, are there any, is there anyone who has any questions for uh, Commissioner Estridge? Okay. I don't see anyone flagging me. Council Member Wyatt?
Thank you, Council President. Commissioner, when the fire and police give us the information regarding overtime, is that, does that come through you or they give it to us directly?
Well, it would come through our accounting department, through Munis, our accounting system.
Okay, so you're, okay, so they'll get it through you. Okay. Okay, so I I'll just, I'll just wait till I get that from them.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Council President?
Council Member Rivera?
Thank you, uh, Council President. Uh, Commissioner, when we were talking to some department heads, we had asked them about contingencies. They referred to the city and the mayor. They didn't have a plan other than knowing that there would be a plan through the administration. Uh, my question to you is, um, at what point do we start discussing? I know that we're still waiting on state aid. Um, but decide on the side side of caution, at what point do we start talking about that contingency? And not wait too long into the future? Um, is there a time where you're going to say, hey, we have to start talking about a contingency?
Um, you know, once again, we're confident we'll get money. Um, we don't know the state aid reduction. That's correct. Um, I think um, any modifications, we have been discussing with the mayor. We're talking about different things, but nothing has been definite. Um, it's, you know, it'd be a huge impact to different um, programs that we have, and the mayor does not want to cut any programs at this time or cut any personnel. So it's an ongoing discussion, but nothing has been uh, defined at all.
And I agree. I don't think any of us want to cut any of the programs. But on the other side, we certainly don't want to find out about it uh, through the Buffalo News, uh, because sometimes the council finds out about things. Press release through something that goes out to the media, then the media calls us up. And how many council members have gone through this? Where we find out things uh, at the very last minute and sometimes through other sources. Uh, that's why I asked at what point, excuse me, that's.
He has an opinion.
Council member, we are looking on a weekly basis of what's coming in, what our revenues are, what our expenditures are. So we are trying to be on top of it at the most, you know, in every day. So we are looking at everything.
Okay, well, we hope we're in communication with the the administration that we find out firsthand. Thank you very much.
Right. We submitted our third quarter gap, and so we're going to also, when we talk about the third quarter gap, we also are going to talk about, okay, we're a month past that. Where are we now? So those discussions will happen.
Any other council members? Council Member Wyatt?
Um, Donna, do we have enough money for the next payroll?
Yes, we do.
Okay, um, just piggybacking on what the Majority Leader talked about, um, as far as the plan. Um, Council President, are we, are we intending on extending our um, approval date so that we can't wait to hear from the state? Or are we looking to, because I know you said Wednesday, we're going to have another conversation. Um, we're supposed to have this approved or disproved by the twenty second. Are we planning on extending that out until we hear from the state?
Uh, are you referring to the federal government stimulus?
Yes, I mean, as far as our budget, but we want to hear if we're going to get this money from the state before we make a decision.
That would be definitely a council as a a decision. Uh, we did hear from uh, Corporation Council on our last meeting um, that with the governor's executive order, um, that this could be a reason to delay uh, the budget, um, and the decision on the budget. Um, and so I think that as we go, you know, like we're doing every day, going from day to day to see what will be the outcome. Um, I've I've made it clear, at least for me personally, um, that I would, I would have some hesitation of voting for a budget that included sixty-five million dollars on an if come. Um, however, every day, you know, we have to see what happens. And then I think the council, or I know the council as a whole would then have to make a decision on whether it was ready to vote for a budget or uh, to lean on the governor's uh, executive order uh, that suspends deadlines.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. President.
All right. I'm sorry, yes, sir, Council Member Columbia?
Yeah, Commissioner Astrid, just a quick question for you. Um, over the past week, there's been some uh, uh, news reporting about how the city of Buffalo dipped into the Board of Education funds. And I think people do not understand the reason that we put those funds together the way that we did. Um, would you be able to just briefly explain so that if there's anybody that's watching that, you know, it wasn't something that was illegal that we did, nor was it something um, that was unwise? Uh, you know, quite contrary, I think that, you know, the reason that we put this together years back was so that we wouldn't have to borrow money, you know, during an emergency situation. But if you could just, you know, maybe give a brief explanation of that on, so that people will understand that we didn't do anything wrong, certainly not illegal um, or unwise. Uh, and my understanding is that in the old days, we used to have to borrow, what was it, the RAN notes uh, um, in order to get money to, so we're actually saving money by having the money from the Board of Ed in the city of Buffalo. Uh, thanks.
Um, sure, I have a, you know, an overview kind of of it. It started, it was put together really in the early nineteen hundreds, around nineteen seventeen, and it has been going forward ever since then. And as Councilman Gollenbeck says, uh, there's been times when the school district had to borrow money from us for short term, from uh, perhaps a paycheck, a payroll or a month. And at this time, the city had used money from the Board of Ed's fund balance. When we do a RAN, which would be a revenue anticipation note, that is would be similar if we borrowed now, knowing that our state aid would be coming in in June. So it'd be a short-term borrowing, and there would be a cost involved in that. By using the fund balance that we have together, we don't have to do that RAN and incur that cost. So when our ninety-eight million comes in in June, then we will have an overabundance. We have approximately a thirty-five million dollar balance at that time.
Gollenbeck, was that adequate for you?
Yeah, thank you. I, that's pretty much what I thought and uh, understood it to be, but um, it's pretty much what I knew it to be. Um, but you know, I've been talking to constituents on Facebook and returning phone calls. And you know, of course, it's always much more complicated uh, of a situation, but some people uh, read the article that was in the newspaper and then took away the impression. It wasn't written that way, but then suddenly got the impression that, you know, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, that this is unethical, that you know, it's borderline, uh, you know, criminal. And in all honesty, it actually, you know, in my opinion, saves the city of Buffalo money because we don't have to get the RAN note um, or anything like that. So I just wanted to clarify that so that if there is anybody that's watching, um, they'll understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't know, went all the way back to nineteen, early nineteen hundreds. You're totally correct, Councilman Gollenbeck. It does save us money. It does save us interest and all those things that we would have to pay and personnel to put together RAN note um, and those type of things. So thank you for the explanation. Any other council members?
Council President?
Yes, President.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I was wondering if we could have, if we could um, have staff look into this. We uh, the conversation was brought up about possibly delaying the vote on the budget and what Corporation Council said last week. I thought he said we could, I'm just trying to remember. If I thought he said that we could delay if the COVID situation created a situation where we could not vote, not about the potential of the money. So if we could just have staff to look in exactly what he said, so just so we're all clear on it. I that I know that's for me as well.
Back on the call. We can get them right now and back in the workshop. Let's see, uh, um, Chief of Staff, uh, because I I don't want to uh, make a, and I know we also have Karen on, uh, but I believe it was um, Tim Ball that made that uh, statement. Um, but he did specifically bring up about if for the sixty-five million that, you know, if we had not received that, but we can get them all so that that could be answered. Anything else?
Yeah, just so we're all on the same page. Know what exactly.
Yep. And I think, I hope it's not my connection after I've talked about City Hall. Yep, and I think, I hope it's not my connection after I've talked about City Hall. Everybody can chop you right now. All right, so we'll get him on the line as soon as we can, and then we'll have that question answered. It is important. Yes.
Um, you know, we're talking about the 65 million. Hi, we are talking about the 65 million from the disaster aid. But we also have, you know, our other plans that we could deficit borrow for a portion of that also. So it would not be the full 65 million that we would be needing at one time. And that would be something we could bond, and then it would be a 15 year period payback.
And once we get Corporation Council on, unless Ms. Gordon wanted to opine on that, once we get him back on, I think his comments dealt with the overall budget as far as things being delayed because of COVID or the whole, and once we get him back on, he can answer that question. Any others before we move to the next department?
I, I think I would prefer.
He's on. Corporation Council, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but you might not.
Can you hear us, sir?
One second.
You can hear me perfect.
You can hear me? Can you hear me?
We hear you perfectly. Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Sir, we can hear us.
I think I can hear you on a slight delay.
I think everybody. I'll reframe or try to ask the question if you could hear us. The, last week, we talked about if there was, with the governors, I think it was Councilmember Wyatt, who asked a question about the governor's order for deadlines. And if the 65 million or whatever amount is not identified, would the council be solid ground to possibly delay the budget vote? And we just, one nation again.
Two pieces to the question. Last week, we were forecasting a May 15th end of the tolling of statutes of limitations. In the time between last week and now, Executive Order 202 has been extended to June 6th. So the tolling of the statute of limitations on any of these deadlines has been moved out to June 6th. So you would have a situation where, right now, the council can say, okay, we're not going to vote on a budget because statute of limitations and these deadlines are right now frozen through June 6th, and you can act up to and after that date, depending on what happens next. It really doesn't have to do with the reasoning for the delay. It has to do with whether or not there is a stoppage on the statute of limitations. Last week, I had to answer the question on the basis of May 15th being the lift date and the council having a deadline after May 15th. So I said, well, there is a period of time there where you could say, oh, well, because of the delay and because of COVID-19, we could take a few extra days, a week, something like that. But in this situation, now we're at June 6th. So it's basically a wait and see. The council can wait until June 6th because those limitations periods have been extended by Executive Order 202.28.
Councilmember, are there any questions on that topic? Councilmember Scanlon, answer the question? And I have a horrible delay, so I'm sure he's already said yes or no. Councilmember Scanlon? The staff, and he was on me.
Yes, thank you very much.
So everybody, okay, good. So just so that the public knows that that was the Corporation. So in the executive order, it has been moved to June 6, 2020. Now, that does not mean that the council will take till June 6, 2020. But if it needed to, we do have that flexibility if there's more information as far as the income or anything else that we had. All righty, thank you. What's the next partner we're bringing on?
Commissioner Barker should already be online, sir.
All right, there he is, I see him. Commissioner Barker, welcome. Is there anything else that you wanted to add to the discussion other than what you already shared with us during the hearing?
Good morning, Council President. No, nothing else to add.
Chief of Staff, were there any questions that were pending?
No, sir.
All right, council members, are there any questions for the Commissioner?
I do have a question.
Okay, all right, again, I've got a little delay. Councilmember Wyatt?
Commissioner Barker, good morning.
Good morning.
I, I know that last time we talked about the mayor's summer youth and their employment situation. Is there a plan where we could possibly do more training with them? If they, if they cannot do something as far as social distancing, I mean, out in the parks and those things? Is there some type of educational or training component that will be utilized for them?
Absolutely, that's, my staff is actually putting that together as we speak.
Okay, okay, that's it, thank you.
We've already done surveys on work sites that could and could not work as well.
Excellent, because the thing I was thinking about, I said, you know, it would be a tragedy if these kids were not able to get some income this summer because it's been something that they've done several years, and many of the kids, where the communities they come from, this is necessary for them, their survival. So it's almost like a stimulus for them as well. So we want to try to continue it as best we can. But definitely, if they can't be out in parks and doing those type of things, if we can be doing training for them, I think it could be very helpful. So I appreciate your forward thinking on that.
Thank you.
Council members, any other questions? Councilmember Bear?
Thank you very much. Commissioner, the mayor mentioned using summer youth for the census. Now, I know that people are kind of paranoid with regards to answering doors or getting even close to people. How are you, I mean, how do you propose to do this? I mean, people are very afraid even answer their doors. I mean, I've knocked on somebody's door and they kind of stay away from me six feet, that kind of thing. How would you use these young men and women to go out there to do that? And keep them protected, at the same time, get past that barrier that people have? Because they're all experiencing this COVID in real time, and they're concerned about having any kind of contact. They're in their homes, just like we are. I hope it works, but I'm also thinking about the safety of our youth.
Right, we're working actually on a couple of proposals and working closely with the regional office to come up with ideas. You know, because, of course, we probably couldn't have the kids come to the doors, but they could probably do some of the work from phone banking, community engagement, things like that. But we're looking, like I said, we're looking at a couple of options.
Any other congress? All right, seeing none. We will thank the Commissioner for here and hear from the next Commissioner in line.
Next Commissioner is.
Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thanks, sir. Saving improvements in inspections is Commissioner Comaford. He will be followed by Commissioner Helfer with part.
All right, Commissioner, thank you for being on. We're moving. Thank you for being on. Commissioner, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
All right, did you have anything else to add from our last discussion? Do you have anything else to add from our last discussion before we go to?
No, we're ready to roll as soon as things open back up again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any council member, anything for the Commissioner? Seeing none, and again, if I'm missing you, just state, just holler me out because there is a horrible delay on the Zoom right now. All right, Commissioner, thank you for being with us, reminding that callback day will be Wednesday if we indeed need to back to you.
Okay, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Bye. Next Commissioner, who is?
Next, we're joined by Commissioner Helfer representing the parking department. He will be followed by Daryl Springer representing Management and Information Systems.
You, sir, I know you've been on all day, but thank you. Is there anything else that you needed to add besides that wonderful background? It's so jealous.
No, I have nothing to add. Nobody sent me any questions, but I'm here today for your honorable buddy to answer any questions you may have.
Council members, any questions for Commissioner Helfer?
So the question that I have for you, Commissioner Helfer, is why the background?
I didn't do it. It's the software.
You're trying to make the rest of us jealous or something.
It's working well, but I didn't do it.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All righty, thank you, Commissioner Helfer.
Thank you.
If we need, I mean, I know you stay on, but if we need to give a callback, it'll be Wednesday. Next. Commissioner Springer on the line?
I don't see him yet, but we do have Commissioner Shell connecting now.
All right, let me know when they're connected. And can you get Commissioner Shell on the line?
Commissioner, go ahead and speak, you're not on mute.
Are you ready for me, Commissioner Shell?
Yeah, if we haven't, we don't have Commissioner Springer, correct, yet? Chief of Staff?
That's correct, I'm trying to get him on now.
All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Shell from Assistance and Taxation. Thank you, sir. Was there anything else that you wanted to add to the conversation that you hadn't added during?
I have nothing further.
Council members, are there any questions for Commissioner Shell from taxation? All right, seeing no questions, you could go back to collecting the tax money, sir. Thank you for everything. Commissioner Springer on?
Yes, there's still call-in, but we have from auditing.
All right, so we do have audit and control on. Is there anything that, are we waiting for anybody else from auditing control? Are we waiting for, or are we ready to move forward?
Yes, sir. We should have myself, Bill Ferguson and Grant Semensky on the call with us.
They already on?
Good, they should be, I'm ready, we're ready.
All right, council members, any questions for the Controller's Office? All right, scanning, I see none.
One thing we'd like to let everyone know that the Controller, she did file her budget response yesterday. So that's clocked in with the council. And also, we're looking to have a response to the administration third quarter gap report this, hopefully by this week, Friday, close the business.
All right, any questions? Seeing no questions, thank you very much. And I know you've been on the call all day and will remain on, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
CIO is available now.
Sorry, somebody was trying to get my attention? The President.
I'll come back to it after, Daryl, that's fine.
Okay. So we will go to Daryl, Daryl, are you with us?
I'm here, can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you, okay. Before you speak, I think one of the things that, that we need is a major upgrade in our systems in City Hall. Everybody in City Hall has been having trouble with the bandwidth, but thank you for being with us, sir.
Oh, no problem at all, I'm sorry to hear that, actually. We can look into it, though, definitely.
Thank you, sir. And it might be just human error, but we know that we, those systems need to be upgraded. Any questions for MIS, council members? Seeing no questions, I'm scanning the Zoom call. Thank you very much, sir.
Council President.
Who is that?
Malcolm, or the Council Chief of Staff?
Yes.
There were remaining questions from the hearings that were, that were sent to MIS for response today. Two of them, Councilmember Noakowski first asked, as we move into a greener state and more work from home, is there any, are there any purchases of technology in this budget? He was requesting details for that. And Council President, you asked, will there be an increase in budget for cybersecurity vis a vis working from home?
All right, sir, can you answer, though, you have the information on that?
I do, actually, and the answer to both the questions is yes. We are acquiring new tech in order to realize the vision of folks working remotely. That includes connectivity technology, VPN, VDI, virtual technology in order for folks to connect from home. We are acquiring conference technology, so along the lines of WebEx or, or GoToMeeting, whichever one we decide on, we do have that in this budget. We are moving to Office 365, which will allow us to use Teams. That was already in the budget, the implementation is happening as we speak for that. And as far as securities go, as we grow and as we add these new technologies on, we're doing it step by step with the Security Office. As you folks know, we do have a security oversight group, which meets on a regular basis. We will start, I have actually instructed our security officer to resume those meetings. We'll probably do it in a forum similar to this, either Zoom or WebEx or whatever technology we choose to use. And they will review and go over all of the security concerns that we have at the city as well as develop new acquisitions to protect our network and to make sure that everything is safe and done securely as we add on new remote, a new remote workforce.
Thank you, sir, did that answer everyone's question? It answered mine? Anyone else? All right, seeing nothing and hearing no one. Thank you very much, sir, for you.
Thank you, everyone, have a great day.
You also.
Thanks.
Chief of Staff?
Council President, if I could just for a second?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I wonder if I could hop back to Commissioner Helfer real quick? I had to pop out and take a phone call real quick, I apologize, Commissioner.
Sure, problem, workshops.
Yeah, Commissioner, within your, your budget, your departments, obviously, there's some, there's some big ticket items on the revenue side that we count on every year, whether that be parking tickets, parking tag surcharge, towing, things of that nature. The on-street parking meters with. The on-street parking meters, with the drop in human activity and us not knowing how long that will last. Do you have kind of things put in place to ensure those revenues are going to come in and how you're going to handle that?
At this point, Councilmember, we do feel comfortable with the governor lifting, hopefully on six-six, as Corporation Council said, that we will get back to some sort of normalcy. What I can tell you is. Our off-street parking in our, in our ramps, we're looking to go back. As, as you know, there's been a. We've been waiving fees for April and May. We're looking to go back to charging the monthly fees as people are starting to slowly but surely come back to work. So I do feel comfortable that, that June sixth date will allow us enough time as we get towards July first. To get back to something close to what our revenues were, at least before. If, if we don't, you know, and something I look at every day, and of course, every week and every month. We will certainly keep everybody informed if we're seeing that. It, it's not working. The other thing is I do anticipate that, you know, we, we took a big hit this year because people are frozen right now. People don't necessarily have to pay their fines. Right this minute, and I think a lot of that will be coming in, and that will be in next year's budget as well.
Yeah, my concern is just, once we lift the pause orders, obviously, there's a phased-in approach that the governor is talking about. And a couple of weeks leading up to each phase, should there not be any setbacks, and that's best case scenario. But even once we start getting into that, when you start talking about restaurants, things of that nature, they're not going to be up and operational right away. And, and that June sixth, if that is the date ultimately, so I have just, I'm concerned that maybe on the, on the revenue side, on some of those things. So it's something I really want us to keep an eye on moving forward.
I will do that. And what I will say operationally, and I understand where you are in restaurants, and I agree with you. But as you know, on our on-street parking, we always look at on-street as short-term parking, off-street as long-term parking. On the on-street parking, short-term, in terms of restaurants, we don't charge after five o'clock anyway. So I think that we're not going to have a huge impact on that, but I do agree with you. We are going to have some sort of impact, the phased-in approach. You know, I'm not certain, I don't think any of us are of how that's going to work, but I do feel comfortable at this point, if we start phasing in on June sixth, we could get back to some normalcy in our revenues.
On the traffic violations fines?
Yes.
There is a jump in about two million.
Yes.
Inticipated revenue. What's, what's the driving cost there?
That would be the school bus arm revenue.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good questions. Appreciate it, too.
Any other questions, council members? Alrighty. Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
No problem, Council President. Thank you.
Chief of Staff?
Apologize if the question was already asked. However, when audit staff was on, and some of them are still here. There was a specific question from Councilmember Rivera, who wanted to know what their opinion was on deficit borrowing and to assess the risk on this budget for that.
Is there anyone still on?
Yes, hi, Bill Ferguson, the City Accountant, with the Department of Audit and Control. First of all, I'd just like to inform the council that the budget response has been clocked in with the City Clerk for, for the City Charter. And then we will submit our third quarter gap report on shortly with the council. But regarding the deficit borrowing, that is discussed in our budget response. And we do share hope that, that we will get it, but it is not guaranteed right as of now until the legislation is passed through Washington. And if we don't get it, we need to look at the city as a whole, need, needs to look at Plan B. But that is addressed in our budget response.
That's where Rivera did that adequately answer your question.
Yes, I'll take a look at the budget, the response, and, you know, and I'm glad it's, it's in writing, and I'll take a look at it. I don't think we've had a chance to review it. But we were, or at least I was concerned that, that the Controller's Office. Kept us in the loop in terms of, you know, waving the flag, seeing things that were problematic.
Of course.
Budget that is problematic. In the past, it has been the Controller's Office that has raised the flag and say, hey, we have a problem with this, and that's why I asked that you assess. Any risk with regards borrowing and regards to. The stimulus money. I know that the administration has been in touch with our federal delegation, with Congressman Higgins and Schumer. I don't know if the Controller's Office has the same sense. Have you been in touch with the Congressman? Or has your office been in touch with Congressman Higgins and, and Schumer to get that, that same feel that the administration has? Because we rely heavily on your expertise to let us know if there's something that's problematic.
I have not been personally in, in contact with the Washington delegation. But to my knowledge is that it's still, it's under discussion in Washington, but really until both Houses of Congress and the President signs it. It's, it's not, it's not there yet, but we are, we hope it's, but it's the best thing for the city to get that stimulus money, but. Until the money's really being wired into our accounts, we can't hundred percent count on that yet. But that is addressed in our response.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think the next department, if no other questions. The next department is going to be Comic Council, Council Staff, and Clerks and Record Retention. Any questions, council members, for those officers?
Council, Council President?
Yep.
Council Number Gullumbeck did send requests to my office asking for a contingency plan. To address that, essentially, there is not a lot directly in the central office line for the budgets. A lot is co-located with the clerks. However, to address, since it was directly asked, the only thing that could make any kind of a savings is the plan that's already been proposed. By Councilmember Noakowski, which would be to recruit new people after attrition of the existing.
Yeah, and it was sent to you, but the, if there has to be a plan, the council. Leadership and council members would have to agree on that plan, so I would ask that we would reserve opining on that. Until we know if we indeed have to have a plan, but I will comment to Councilmember Gullumbeck. That we are starting to have that conversation. Council leaderships. Met this morning to have some conversations on different things. We, it's very difficult, as we've heard from other departments, to know what that would look like. However, we know that as you've requested to the line, if, if in fact, we had to do that, we would present to the council a, a proposed plan. Councilmember Gullumbeck, is that okay?
Yes, yeah, and I wanted to publicly thank you. I appreciate the discussion and the negotiations that went on with the discussion with the. The lawyers' position with the council. You know, I think that, you know, this has been an excellent council to work with in regards to. Ideas being broached back and forth and discussion going back and forth and, you know, maybe not always getting exactly what we want, but. Coming to some sort of a compromise, and, you know, I appreciate that very, very much. Also, you know, the point with the contingency budget is, is that I think that every department is, is in the same boat that we are. Everybody, I think, is pretty much cut pretty close to the bone in every single department in this building. I can tell you, when I started here twenty years ago, you know, there were more people employed in this building, and they've slowly, you know, been eliminated over time. In almost every department, including our own, and so, you know, when we look at a contingency plan. I almost, I, I'm almost uncomfortable when that question gets brought up, because I don't want the administration to show their hand at this point. Because if we have a contingency plan that's already in effect, I would hate for the federal government to say to us, oh, well, then go to Plan B, we'll get you the shortfall that's there. So, you know, hopefully, you know, I share the pessimistic optimism of Donna and some of the other people, that we will get at least something from the federal government. And it will hopefully keep us away from having to make catastrophic choices, because I think that if we do have to go to a contingency budget. You know, a percentage point or two might be doable, but if we have to do, you know, the eight percent that I remember was bandied about at one point. I think that, you know, we're, we would be in for a whole heck of a lot of trouble worse than back in oh-three, oh-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you for the compliment. As you know, since I've been in leadership. I, I don't mind discussion. We go back and forth, we figure it out, and I think it was Councilmember Franzak who says, you know, you've done a good job when everybody's a little uncomfortable, a little unhappy. But we do try, do really try to work together to have those discussions. I'm not afraid of having those discussions and then doing what's right for the people. You know, there's, there's some in the history, history before most of us got here, that would count their votes, take their ball and run. And go, that's how it is, and too bad, and that's not how we operate here, so thank you. Council members, we are now down to labor unions, and I see that at least one is on. Chief of Staff, have we invited all the labor unions to be a part of this?
We've invited all. Rick Bartolata had no comment so far. Sean Cardy is unavailable for this meeting. We are joined by Vincent Ventressa.
All right, and I know that he has been on almost since the beginning, if not from the beginning of this conversation, so, sir, you have the floor.
First of all, thank you for having me on. When I do have the opportunity to speak to the council, I like to take that opportunity. Let me start by saying that, you know, we are obviously in a fiscal crisis, and we understand that as the union. And when called upon by the mayor, Local 222 set out immediately, and we did a letter-writing campaign. I've been involved Zoom meetings with Congressman Higgins, with Congressman Schumer. You know, anytime that Local 222 is called upon, we try to step up and do anything we can to try to secure those funds. Also, in that effort, we do have a state association who I contacted, and they're doing lobbying on the state level and through the state association. To coordinate with all the professional fire departments across the state of New York to lobby their congresspeople. And of course, we have the International Association of Firefighters, who we contacted as well, same situation. Using their lobbying efforts, they're very, we feel they're a very powerful organization at the federal level, and they've also provided us with a lot of information that I've tried to pass along to the Commissioner. Discussing specific grants and funds that can be earmarked specifically for the fire department, so I'm hoping that. Through those efforts, that the Commissioner is able to secure some funds, even if it's specifically earmarked for fire. So with that being said, the Commissioner made some. Comments and stuff like that. I just wanted to touch on a bunch of the stuff and see if I could help answer any questions. Of course, I was a little surprised to come back so soon, but, so I kind of wanted to go through it, but I'll try and hit on what, what I, what I saw that he had. Just in talking about the shift change and the cost savings from the shift change to the twenty-four-hour schedule. We felt that there would be some cost savings there. We went from having eight shift changes down to four. So we cut the shift change and the shift change overtime, and I don't think you're going to see a drastic reduction there. Obviously, there'll be some reduction. I also, we also feel like with the changing the schedule that there be less usage of sick time, I'd really be interested personally. I don't know, I don't know if it's in the budget. Or if it can be provided, but to actually see what the sick time numbers are overall for the department, have they gone down drastically or not? I believe they probably have. Again, members know and are using twenty-four hours of sick when they're off sick. In turn, we have a situation where members have a different type of schedule and hopefully are not utilizing the sick time unless absolutely necessary. As far as, I know overtime is a big concern within the department. Some of that, I feel like, can be pinpointed to the administration. Also, as well, you know, the Commissioner discussed acting and. You know, that's something the union has agreed to in nineteen eighty-four, and we've had in the department, and I don't know if they're utilizing it to their best ability. I also feel like. That leads into a safety issue. Also, our straight day members who are working are normally afforded ten hours of overtime every pay period, not twenty. What else do I have? The disability retirement situation, we did, in the last negotiations, come up with the Retirement Incentive Program, which I think is a good program. And the union was behind it, and we were able to get some members done. We did have some issues with it that the, the members who did it weren't being properly paid. And we're trying to correct those issues, and it's awfully hard to encourage other people to do something if the people who have already done it are not being properly paid. The other thing that I keep kind of banging my head against the wall is, is that we have multiple members who have been off injured for a multitude of years. And for whatever reason, the city has the ability to file on their behalf, and I also feel that the city has the ability. Being the largest municipality under. The Controller Denapoli's office, New York City has their own disability and pension system, so they're like a separate entity. So when you talk about the City of Buffalo being the largest municipality affected by the disabilities run through the state, through New York State. And the fact that we can't, with the Commissioner and people at City Hall, and the injured member and their doctors and the city doctor, get members retired in more of an expedited manner. This is an immediate cost savings to the city, and it's something that I just can't understand why we can't, you know, cannot get done. I mean, we're looking at people. Who could be retired, who are injured catastrophically, and within a six-month period, we know they're never going to fight fires again, and then they sit on IOD. For years, two years, three years, four years, and they're just, the city is paying their full salary and benefits. And they could be retired, and I don't know why. I mean, I, I'm fine with continuing to push the Retirement Incentive Program, and I will continue to do my part in that. But on the other hand, I just can't understand why we're not retiring these members much faster. As for the home confinement, we discussed the idea of sick and sick members being checked on. There really is not a situation where sick members are being checked on. We just don't have the members off long-term sick, which is a really good thing, and members, again, are not utilizing their sick time as much. The only members who are being affected by the home confinement is our long-term IOD members, and we're pretty much, they changed their schedule, they put them on a year. On a straight day schedule, and the next thing, you know, these members cannot leave their homes fifty-two weeks of the year, and they're being punished for getting injured on one of the most dangerous jobs. And again, we're spending money to go out and check and make sure they're home when we should be trying to get them retired, so I have, you know, strong feeling about that. As far as the dynamic staffing, excuse me. I know that was mentioned, and the city, the Commissioner claimed that they're saving a million dollars per year on that. I just don't believe their numbers. I'd like to see the actual numbers that are, that they're utilizing. A lot of the things he talked about, a PowerPoint and all this, that he has all this information that's not shared with the union, and I think that strongly. Rings of the fact that if they provide this information to the union, we're going to be able to show the real data and show that there's not the cost savings that they claim. And in the end, you know, of, of course, you know how we feel about it, but it, and I'm not trying to take it out. I would just love to see the data they, that they're providing to the council. That shows these million dollars in savings, because I just don't, I'm not buying it. So, um. Let's see. Again, the idea of overtime, too, is that it's controlled by promotion, hiring and promotions. We ran a deficit, you know, proper staffing in the department is in the area of seven hundred. I think we have seven hundred right now. We have sixty more in the academy. The hiring and promoting of officers, we should have fully staffed viable officers and positions, and we should have a staffing of firefighters at a high level, and that's going to save you the money in overtime. And at the end, if you're going to pay overtime costs, it should be paid to the lower members, the firefighters. And the problem becomes, we have right now, just talking about lieutenants, we have ten. Lieutenants of the Buffalo Fire Department who are off injured on duty status for over a year. So you're paying, first of all, you're paying the ten members their full lieutenant salary and benefits. Then, if they're off. Since they're off, you either are paying someone to replace them on overtime, or you're paying another firefighter to act and paying lieutenant-based salary to those firefighters. And again, a lot of these firefighters are in the step system, so you have a situation where a firefighter is, is going from their fifty thousand dollar salary to the eighty thousand dollar lieutenant salary, every shift that there's no lieutenant there. I feel strongly that we have. Contract language that these, that there should be promotions made in these places, and again, it's shortsighted to not make promotions for injured officers. Including the fact that we have contract language that supports it, and then pay, instead, you're paying overtime and you're paying acting time. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Uh, I know the commissioner too talked about the twenty-four hour sick. We had about a half a dozen people who took off in the middle of a shift sick. And they took the full twenty-four hours and we did have an arbitration on that. And the, with the union's feeling that this, it wasn't directly addressed in contract negotiations, I wish it was. I would, you know, it wasn't something that we really thought about, people taking off sick in the middle of a twenty-four hour shift. Now we have a situation that when a member becomes sick after working nine, ten, fifteen hours of that shift, that if they go home sick and can't function. That they're losing the entire twenty-four hours. That's the way it is, we'll have to live with it, but again, that happened like a half dozen times, it's just not something that a big arbitration win. Which leads to my last thing, is that the fire budget, I wasn't on for, uh. The, um, legal department budget, but I'll tell you right now, we're gonna drive the department's arbitration and spend your, the city's money and the union's money. To fight arbitrations because we're not getting the cooperation and the understanding of what is reasonable and what makes sense and what the contract states. And I feel that the department is being misled by, uh, poor legal, uh, council and these are the things I have to deal with. And so we're gonna continue to fight every fight to arbitration and you're talking about five, ten, fifteen thousand dollar arbitrations. To settle things about very basic contract language and things operationally that don't affect, uh, the bottom line, so. I guess that's it, so I'd be more than willing to answer any and all questions.
Thank you, uh, Vince, council members, questions for Vince? Council member White.
Thank you, thank you, Vinnie. Um, question regarding overtime, you said there's ten hours of overtime that's contractual?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
What we have is. Members in straight days positions, fire prevention. Uh. There's a list of straight day positions, normally they were afforded every pay was ten hours, the commissioner talked about twenty hours. So they were, every pay they're getting about ten hours of overtime. I mean, obviously they're coming in and working and doing things that need to be done. But they were, they were afforded that overtime and obviously in the fiscal crisis, that's been cut completely. But they're doing about ten hours of pay and not twenty, so I just wanted to mention it.
But that, but that's, but that's contractual, it's not contractual?
No, no, they were, they were afforded that time.
Actually, that is not, uh, true.
Commissioner. Yeah, just a minute, sir, we wanna make sure that we answer, I'm not gonna negotiate your contract. I will give you an opportunity, um, after the council members have asked a question to respond, we will not go into a back and forth.
Okay, thank you, I agree.
Okay. Council member White?
Yes, and then the, I would ask, when I guess I'll ask commissioner about this, about the sick time numbers. Um, I would like to see that as, as well as a request. See that number from last year to this year to see if there's a bit of balancing out, um, of that, so if I could get that information. Um, from the commissioner, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Of course.
Any other coun, any other council members for the union? Or, or we? Council member Bear?
Um, I don't know if this is, it, this is regards to the union's concern. What regards to people that are home sick for long periods of times. And perhaps they'll never go back to work as the union president mentioned. And they sit there drawing a check. I'm trying to understand what's the incentive for the city not to. Move forward with the forced retirement. I don't know if they can, I, I heard the word forced retirement. Uh, that means to actually apply environment for, uh, that person that is off sick. Why hasn't the city done it? Is there a reason for that? I'm just trying to understand that.
Can I answer that?
Vincent?
Well, I was gonna say, it's not about forcing them into retirement. It's the idea that, first of all, we're not, we don't have any members on long-term sick. There's nobody who is off just sick. Usually utilizing their sick time for a long periods of time, if there are, there are handful. What we have is a situation where members are catastrophically injured and they're off injured. And they just sit there on injured, and I agree, the city could do the, again, I don't know all the avenues or reasons why we are not. You know, applying and lobbying the state to retire these members with our, with their medical, with the city doctor, with. You know, the idea that let's push forward and get these members retired as quickly as possible. We have members who are sitting out there on I O D for two years, three years, four years, and again, the member, uh. Would probably be in a better place if they were retired, I don't, I, that I'm still confused about myself.
Is there somebody that, is there someone that could answer that question on the administration side?
We have the commissioner with us and commissioner, we'd ask that you would just limit it to that answer first before, uh, responding to those.
Uh, of course, and Mr. Redtuska is correct, we do have a number of members who are catastrophically injured and will not be coming back to work for, for any reason, actually. And, uh, they have applied, uh. For that status, injured on duty set or for retirement. Uh, disable, disability of retirement through the state on occasion, whether it's accidental or performance of duty. And in most instances, we're at the, the mercy of the state, I mean, they're on, they're at their own timetable. Uh, I agree, you know, uh, maybe together in cooperation with the union, we could lobby the state to speed up the process possibly. But another, uh, avenue that we're trying to broach is that, uh, Buffalo Retirement Incentive Program as well. So if we coordinate our efforts, uh, see if we can get the state to speed up their process. And, uh. Use the Buffalo Retirement Incentive Program as well to free up some of these, uh, move these, uh, individuals along because. They did have a, serve us, they served the community for many years and. They are injured, we need to move them on to the next phase of their life, so I'm fully aboard with that. Uh, but we, what we do need is more cooperation with the union as far as, uh. Getting more of these members, uh, involved in the, uh. In the process of the Buffalo Retirement Incentive Program and they did agree to it contractually and we as administration cannot reach out. To them individually because it's, uh, considered direct dealing. Uh, as they well know, so the unit has to help us and cooperate with us in getting interested in members in so we can. Uh, at least inform them of the program, let them know, uh, what the rights are and. What their conversation involves, so, but it means. Getting cooperation from the union to reach out to these individuals, bring them in and get some type of orientation done because we, we do, we have all the numbers, we can sit down. We can run all the numbers with these individuals and we can free up these positions as well and, and save the taxpayers, uh, a lot of money and. We'd be able to fill these position at a lower rate as well.
So my, my next question would be, I, it takes the state, the union. And command staff there, yourself to kinda come together to work this thing out. Is there, um. Is it on your radar to sit down with the union and with the state to start working this out?
Yes, it, it definitely is, and it does, it does require a unified effort. Uh. We're not getting the level of cooperation from the union, I don't wanna go back and forth, as we said, uh, it's not an argument, this is just, you know, just a statement of fact, we're not getting the level of participation we would like to. Uh, from the union, cuz once again, we cannot direct deal, uh, with the members, we have to have the union bring them to us.
Well, I'm hopeful that the union and the administration and they can get together and resolve this. And for those people that are catastrophic. Um, off duty collecting a paycheck for years. Uh, I mean, it's unfortunate that they're in that position and I hope they're taken care of, um, with regards to their pension. But we need to move forward because those are positions that are being held up right there. So. Can I move on to my next question, council president?
Yes, you have, you have the floor, sir.
With regards to dynamic staffing, we've heard, um. Some concerns regarding dynamic staffing and you've thrown numbers at us. We make our decisions based on data. And so we need to know, if you said there's a million dollars in savings, show us the data with regards to the million dollars or else we're gonna have the back and forth. That is happening right now, if you give us that data, that is very important. And the data regarding the closing of the firehouses that. We had asked earlier, there was, so everything is driven by data. Um, so if you can provide us that data that you said you had on the PowerPoint. Uh, can you summarize it, give it to us so we can look at the data with regards to the closing? Because we're gonna get back and forth with the argument, uh, you know, um. That we're having right now here on Zoom and hopefully we can resolve all of this by sitting together. And negotiating together with the union as well, thank you.
And I certainly, if I can comment, uh, very quickly on that, councilman, and. I'm having that data collected, we're gonna go back a full two years, I was on the phone with our chief of communications, uh, this morning. Uh, they referenced, uh, a recent study, we went back, uh. Twelve to fourteen months, we're going back a full two years to get a, a, a larger and a clearer look at dynamic staffing and, and what effects it may or may not have on fire protection. So we'll have that in your hands very shortly, as well as the savings projected.
Thank you. I know that the president Protim asked it, asked for it, um, I asked for another piece of it. So, uh, we do, um, expect that to come forward. Council members, any other questions for either the union or commissioner, uh, while they, um? All right, I don't see.
Can I, can I before? I'm sorry. I would just say that, well, the union would absolutely like to see that data as well when provided. And. I don't even know what to say, I, I don't wanna. The union sees the retirement center program as a benefit to the members and to the city. And there's no reason that we're not cooperating, and if there's a level of cooperation, it's a two-way situation, so. We'd love to get things done and, and, and fis, be physically responsible and save the city, uh, funds, so, we're looking forward to doing that.
Well, that's, that's good to hear, and I think, I mean, and it is in the record now. Um, the union has said that they, um, would agree with that. So I think that as the majority leader has just stated, it, it needs to happen. I think it would be disappointing, uh, to come back, uh, next year and then we still are having the same conversation. As a matter of fact, I mean, I would encourage if everybody is being sincere of their desire to work together on the retirement incentive program. That before we even vote, there should be some discussion, uh, together. So that they come back to the council to be able to say, hey, we're having these conversations, uh, we can, as both have said, save the city money. If it's about conversation and working together, and I have, but we have on here both the administration representative from the administration. Representative, uh, from the union, then that should occur, um, uh, without, uh, any doubt. Um, question on the I O Ds, do we know how many people we have out on long-term I O Ds right now? Has that already been answered or asked?
Yes, so we have thirty on I O D or long-term I O D right now.
And those thirty, are they waiting for a decision from the state?
Yes, they are.
And how long, do you know approximately, and this is average, and I know averages are not fair because you may have one that's been on for three in one. But do we know about how long they have been waiting in that status?
Each, each individual is, is, uh, a different, they, they may have applied depending on when they applied, uh, what they applied for, whether it was, uh, through accidental or performance of duty. So each individual is different, uh, I can give you a breakdown of that later if you would like. And, uh.
If you can.
Then, uh, they're also, they're only allowed to, uh, be declined X amount of times as well. So once they, uh, uh, they see that, uh, that amount, well, they've been denied two times, three times, four times. Actually, there's, there, uh, there's no other avenue for them and there would be a pro cannula, uh, for the Buffalo Retirement Center Program. Those are some of the people that we're reaching out to.
Yeah, if we could have that data, um, and, um, as was requested, all of the information that will be received to council is public information. Um, obviously, individual names and those type of things are not shared publicly, uh, because of laws. But we will, uh, the uni, the union, you will have that, uh, data available, um, as well as the public. Some members, any other questions? I am. Yep, sir.
If I may, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to clear up a little misinformation that Mr. Redtuska put out earlier, uh, when I just logged on. As far as there are. Are, uh, individuals who work during the days before tests, uh. They do work for ten hour days, these are people on fire prevention and training bureau, uh, places like that. So they would work for tens, for ten hour days and typically work that fifth day, which is usually a Friday, but not always. Uh, ten hours overtime, so it would be ten hours a week. And twenty hours of pay since we get paid every two weeks, so it is indeed twenty hours, I just wanted to clarify that.
I disagree.
All right, and again, um. We will not negotiate back and forth, um, you can eat. Uh, file a statement to the council, uh, with your disagreement, commissioner, did you have anything to add?
Uh, and no, my mother always told me if I have anything nice to say, not to say anything else, so, I'll stop right there, thank you.
Vince, did you have anything else nice to say or anything else?
Thank you so much for having me on, I appreciate your time, council members.
Thank you, and to fire, and I know, I just thank you, uh, for all you do, um. Uh, I've commented before, I don't wanna be redundant, but I'll say very quickly, you know, you're out there in the worst of weather like are all of our first responders, so. I hope that we're able to, you all are able to work together in that retirement incentive and send back some report, um, of, can, to move forward.
Thank you so much and thank you for your support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, chief of staff.
That's the end of the list, sir, until caucus at two P M.
All right, council members, did, uh, did we miss anything, anything else we need to visit? All right, hearing none, um, we will see you all at the two P M caucus. Uh, with the majority leader leading our caucus, thank you everyone for your time and the.
Thank you.